All right. Good morning. We will call to order this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System at 10:00 AM, December 1, 2023, in House Hearing Room 3 of the Cordell Hall Building in downtown Nashville, Tennessee. I want to welcome each of you to the meeting today. I'm David Lillard, Tennessee State Treasurer and Chair of the Board of Trustees. The next thing that we'll do is have the roll call, which is item number two on our agenda. We'll ask our Executive Secretary, Mr. Wayman, the Director of the Retirement System, to call the roll, the members.
Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Barker.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Secretary Hargit.
Treasurer Lillard.
Here.
Director Long.
Ms. Maxwell.
Here.
Ms. Moore.
Here.
Comptroller Mumpower. Mr. Stanfield.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Mr. Wormsley.
Here.
Here as well. You've got 11 members in our quorum.
Okay, a quorum is noted. Next item on the agenda is item number three, which is approval of minutes of the September 29, 2023, meeting. Is there any discussion with respect to the minutes? Are any changes or additions? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Williams. Is there a second?
Sir.
All right, we have a second by Mr. Wormsley. Seeing no discussion, we'll ask the Executive Secretary to call the roll on the motion to approve the minutes of September 29, 2023.
And Mr. Archer.
Approved.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes.
Treasurer Lillard.
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Stanfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wormsley.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, unanimous.
All right, the item is approved. Next item is item four on our agenda, the Board of Trustees Committee Reports. The first one is the Administrative Committee, which Mr. Wayman chairs, and we'll call on him for that report.
Yes, thank you. We met this morning at 9:00 AM in Conference Room D on the eighth floor of the Cordell Hall Building. We had three action items on our agenda. The first was the approval of the minutes from the September 29 meeting. We also had a presentation from Joe Walker, the Assistant Director of Employee Reporting on the Town of Arlington, and them wanting to seek participation effective January 1, 2024, in the alternate defined benefit plan that we'll discuss later. Also discussed the Brownsville External Pension Plan and their desire to have Treasury both administer the plan and co-invest the assets. We had a brief discussion about the actuarial valuation, an overview of that process that we'll hear from Justin Thacker later in the meeting, and we had an operations update for both financial empowerment and from TCRS, and that is the report of the Administrative Committee.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Wayman about the Administrative Committee Report? All right, seeing no questions, we'll go to item 4B, which is the Audit Committee Report, and call on Mr. Barker, our Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Audit Committee met this morning at 8:00 in Conference Room C of this building, Cordell Hall Building. On our agenda, the only action item was to approve the minutes from our previous meeting, September 29, 2023. We also had a review of the 2022 Comptroller's Gatsby opinion letters, the fiscal year 2024 FIA risk assessments, a review of the internal audit results, and a review of the internal audit projects tracker, which keeps us up to date on the various internal activities that are going on with that, reviewed the Audit Committee responsibilities calendar. We discussed the Comptroller's hotline. There was one from a previous meeting. It's still in progress, and then there's one other additional one that's under consideration by Mr. Wayman at the present time. Those are our items of activity this morning, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Are there any questions, Mr. Parker, about the Audit Committee Report? All right, seeing none. Item number 4C is the next item, the Investment Committee Report. I chair the Investment Committee, and I'll give the report. Investment Committee met this morning prior to this board meeting and session, and we approved a private equity investment that will be reported in a press release later today. And also, we had a discussion with the Chief Investment Officer and received a report from him in regard to investment matters and portfolio issues. He'll cover this, some of that, in the investment report that you'll hear later here today. So that concludes the business that was before your Investment Committee today. Is there any questions about the report? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next item. Item 5 on your agenda is political subdivision seeking participation. That would be the Town of Arlington, Tennessee, alternate defined benefit plan. Mr. Wayman, would you give the report on that item?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Treasurer. So, on page 21 of your packet is a description of the Town of Arlington. They're wishing to join the TCRS effective January 1, 2024. They have selected the alternate defined benefit plan, which, as a reminder, is it got a 1.4% accrual formula or accrual benefit, and it's, you're eligible for full retirement at age 65 invested, or where a combination of years of service plus age total at least 90. They are including cost of living adjustments for their retirees. Part-time employees are not going to be eligible to participate. The initial rate, employees will be required to pay 5%. The employer's initial rate is 4.16. They are authorizing all their employees to establish all years of prior service at their choice, and then that the employer would pick up the balance, would pay the liability on the balance that way. At the date of participation, they are going to pay us $2,194,686 to allow their employees to establish all their prior service. At the meeting, Administrative Committee meeting this morning, a motion was made to, for me, to make the presentation that this committee make the recommendation to the full Board of Trustees for their participation in TCRS effective January 1, 2024. And with that, I make the motion to adopt, to allow the Town of Arlington to participate in TCRS effective January 1, 2024.
All right, and that would be our participation in the alternate defined benefit. This plan is described by Mr. Wayman. Is there a second for Mr. Wayman's motion? All right, we have a second. Mr. Cox, and I'll just point out here at this particular point that this is a matter that's been worked on for a number of years about the Town of Arlington, and we have with us today here Drew Freeman, who is our Director of Outreach. Drew, you want to stand up for the, for the TCRS and the Treasury Department? Drew heads a team of individuals who work with cities, counties, and other members of the TCRS, and Drew and his folks have been working with Arlington for a lot of years. I know because I used to be the County Commissioner who represented Arlington in Shelby County, so I know about the history of this, and it's been quite a while. So, congratulations, Drew, on your successes in this. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All right, seeing none. Mr. Wayman, would you call the roll and the motion to adopt?
Mr. Cox, Mr. Archer.
Ah.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Ellis.
Aye.
Treasurer Lillard.
Aye.
Ms. Maxwell.
Aye.
Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Stanfield.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wormsley.
Right.
And I vote aye as well. If you have it unanimous.
All right. The matter is adopted. On item number six is the next item, TCRS administration and co-investment of assets for the Brownsville Supplemental Defined Benefit External Pension Plan. Mr. Wayman, would you give the report on this item?
Yes. On page 29 of your packet is information about the Town of Brownsville and their supplemental defined benefit plan. As a reminder, in 2014, the General Assembly enacted legislation requiring public employers that maintain a defined benefit plan outside of TCRS to meet certain actuarial and funded standards. The Treasury Department is responsible for monitoring these plans. Part of the legislation that was passed at that time would allow for a political subdivision to request TCRS to either administer their plan, co-invest their assets, or both. So, Brownsville is requesting the Treasury Department to provide administrative services and the co-investment of assets effective January 1, 2024. The administrative services includes collection of contributions as determined by the actuary that Brownsville engages, making the monthly retired payroll to each of the retirees in the plan, remitting tax withholdings to Brownsville for them to report to the IRS, as well as providing some other tax information to their members and to the City of Brownsville, as well as maintaining the payroll. So, this will be the fourth external pension plan that we administer. We currently administer Alcoa, Franklin, and the City of Covington's closed external pension plans. This will be the fourth one effective January 1, 2024. At the Administrative Committee this morning, they made a recommendation for me to make a motion at this board meeting to allow Treasury to administer and co-invest the assets of the external pension plan of the City, of Town of Brownsville. And with that, I make that motion.
All right. We have Mr. Wayman's motion. Is there a second for his motion? Or Mr. Barker's seconds? All right, any discussion on the motion? If not, Mr. Wayman, would you call the roll and the motion to adopt?
Mr. Archer.
Ah.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Ellis.
Aye.
Treasurer Lillard.
Aye.
Ms. Maxwell.
Aye.
Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Stanfield.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wormsley.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We have unanimous.
Okay, the item is adopted. All right, next item is item number seven, the actuarial valuation presentation, and we'll call on Mr. Justin Thacker, Actuary, and we'll ask him to give the presentation on his actuarial valuation report for USI Consulting Group. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, we come a couple of times of year, a couple of times a year, and split up the different types of pension plans that we're talking about. And in TCRS, we have what we call the Legacy Plan, which is everybody who was working for the state up until 2014, and then the Hybrid Pension Plan, which is everybody that was hired after that date. Today's presentation is all about the Legacy Pension Plan. So, we spend the first half of the fiscal year working on the Legacy Plans. It's the bigger of the plans. It's got a lot, lot going on there. Come to bring that information to you at this meeting, and then we talk about the Hybrid Plans in the March board meeting. So, just wanted to be clear what we're talking about. And as we come through here, feel free to interrupt me and ask any questions. It's a lot, a lot of information. I'll touch on some things at a really high level and try to make some points, but feel free to interrupt me if you, if you want to have any, any commentary. Be happy to answer questions. Also, the work that we're reporting on here is as of June 30, 2023, so the end of the second quarter is when we stop and collect the data, and we collect the asset values, and put our calculations together. Then, the contribution rates that we come up with are then applicable first in July of the following year. So, we're talking about recommendations for July 1 of '24 as a result of these reports. There's also a series of reports that we put together for Gatsby disclosures, and those are more from an accounting perspective. What we're talking about today are funding requirements, so slightly different methodologies. At the end of the day, we're still trying to value liabilities and look at asset values and see how they compare to make sure the plans are functioning properly. But today's results are more about the funding valuations as opposed to any Gatsby disclosures, although I do have a slide that gives you a little, a little insight into what Gatsby disclosures would look like as well. But, a little bit more background, the actuarial valuation is dependent upon a many number of assumptions that we make about the future, whether that be retirement rates, turnover rates, salary expectation, mortality. We stop and look at those assumptions every four years with an experience study, and if we need, if we see any patterns of, of activity in any of those assumptions that are different than what we've been assuming in the past, then we make adjustments going forward to try to refine our calculations each, each four, every four years. So, that was last performed in 2020, so next year will be time to look at those assumptions again. So, we'll be starting that process next summer, and we'll be reporting on that at that point. But for now, we're still using the same assumptions that we adopted first in 2021, after we finished the 2020 experience study. There's also an actual audit performed on our, on our numbers every 10 years. That was last performed in 2020, so we're midway through that period as well. So, continuing on a little bit of the background here and just the overall perspective of the magnitude of these plans, we're talking about plans for state employees, higher education employees, K-12, K-12 teachers that were hired before July 1 of 2014. We talked about that. This presentation also has some numbers related to the 640 or so local governments that are participating in TCRS. You heard some commentary this morning of new local governments joining. That's the same process that the other 640 local governments went through to join TCRS at some point in the, in the, in the past. All of the optional for, of the benefit elections that the local governments elect are optional. They have different, they have choices they can make when they join TCRS, and so we, we value each of those individually, and those are a separate process of individual contribution rate recommendations that we create for each of the local governments. So, today I'll show some results in the aggregate for the local governments, but the majority of our focus today is going to be on the recommend, recommended rates for the state and the teacher groups. We have 161,000 active employees participating in this set of legacy pension plans. That number has been slightly declining in recent years simply because all new employees that are being hired are being into, are being placed into the Hybrid Plan. I have a slide that'll break that down a little bit later. 179,000 retired participants being paid out of the Legacy Plan with about $3.2 billion a year in retiree payments going back into, back into the state. So, there are a lot, a huge magnitude of impact here, not only for the participants but for the state as a whole, that, that you guys are responsible for managing. So, market value of assets are $63 billion, and again, this is just for the Legacy Plans. There's, there's more there set aside for the Hybrid Plans. But even though, and this is some, some information that we'll talk about later in the presentation, but even though we stopped putting new participants in this plan nearly 10 years ago now, there's still a significant amount of responsibility and liability associated with this plan. So, that's, and you'll, you'll see that more clearly as we keep moving through these slides. I won't spend much time on this, but just, you have this as a point of reference in case you're curious, you want to look back on it, but there are some significant differences between the Hybrid and the Legacy Plans. The most significant differences being the bottom right corner of the, of the chart here are the boxes as it relates to. The Hybrid Plan has lesser pension benefit promises, but also includes a 5% employer contribution to a defined contribution plan, as well as stabilization reserve and some cost control opportunities to manage volatility going forward in the Hybrid Plan. So, again, just have that for your point of reference, and we've already touched on that slide. Okay, so here is a summary of the active participants from the 2022 to 2023. Do you see the first couple of rows for teacher and state groups? As we expected, those groups are continuing to decline somewhere between 6% and 8% per year. And like I said, those are retirements, turnover, people that are leaving state employment, and then as those people are being replaced with new hires, those participants are going into the Hybrid Plan. So, this is not unexpected. The political subdivisions show a growth in active population simply because all the political subdivisions are represented here. We're not distinguishing between a legacy or a hybrid concept because they have a choice of which plans they're choosing. So, this page is exactly as we would have expected. This page, there's a lot of data here, and I'll, I'll just point out a couple of things rather than try to, try to highlight the whole thing. I just really wanted to indicate that there's nearly $9 billion of annual payroll as it relates to all of the data for participants that we're, that we're collecting and valuing in the projections of future liabilities. It's difficult to distinguish between what these averages mean by group because each group only represents employees that were there in 2014. The state group is a little more mature, little older ages than the teacher group was at that time, and so that, those averages do not necessarily represent an average of all state employees or all teacher employees. It's, it's, so it becomes more and more difficult to, to glean any useful information from those averages. But I did want to show the total, the total numbers there and the, and the total dollars. The total payroll grew in the plan by 5% from one year, from last year to this year. For the retired group, these are the people who are receiving monthly checks. Those participant counts have continued to grow, and that also would be expected because that, that would suggest that the number of people who are retiring and terminating from the active population are moving into the retired population. More people are moving into that category than those who are passing away and, and being removed from the rolls. A little bit of an aberration there. In the state row, it shows a slight decrease in retirees in the state group, but that is actually more of a data adjustment. There were several records in 2022 where some participants had two records, and in 2023, those were consolidated to a single record. So, it doesn't necessarily represent a decline in total retirees. It's just a slight adjustment in how those were, were reported. And so, if you actually adjust for that, the state group is also growing in their retiree payrolls as well. And then this page shows you at the bottom right-hand corner there, the $3.2 billion in annual payments being paid to retirees, broken down by the various groups. And the average annual retirement benefit is $18,000 per year, and that average grew at about 3% year over year, which happens to be the same cost of living adjustment that was granted last year. There's a lot more that goes into that average. It's the, the, the group itself is aging. People have come into the group. Some people have left the group after they've passed away. So, it's not necessarily, it's more of a coincidence that it's exactly the same as the cost of living adjustment, but it actually, it all, it has an impact. So, so the process that we go through in our evaluation of these, of these liabilities is to collect the data, which is what we just shared, a little bit of highlights of what, what the data looks like and the magnitude of the number of records that we're looking at. We take those data records and we project assumptions into the future to develop liabilities, and then we compare those to the assets that are currently on hand. And when we match those two together, we have methods to make sure that the plan is not only funded from a prior perspective but going forward. So, we'll spend a few minutes now talking about the assets, which are usually the most interesting, the interesting part of the presentation because the, the liabilities can be pretty well predicted from one year to the next. We're going to have a few ups or downs of things that we didn't expect, but for the most part, we can predict the liabilities with a large group like this. But the assets we, from one year to the next, it's difficult to predict. We, we have longer-term expectations and longer-term predictions that we think are pretty good, but from one year to the next, they can be quite volatile. And so, one of the things that we do to, to handle that is we have what we call a smoothing method. The Gatsby reporting requirements require us to use a market value of assets. So, whatever the movement in the assets are from one year to the next, if there's significant returns or losses, the Gatsby disclosures reflect those values 100%. From a funding perspective, we also value stability in the rate recommendations. And so, there's a method in place that allows us to smooth any gains or losses in assets over a 10-year period. And over the course of the 10-year period, you always get back to a true market value, but you're never exactly at market value because you're constantly spreading some of those gains and losses. Otherwise, the recommended rate that we come to you, with, come to you with every year would be very volatile. It'd be difficult to budget for and difficult to plan for. So, this provides, provides a smoother approach for that. So, showing what I'm talking about here, this is a 10-year history of actual asset returns. May be difficult to see a little bit on the top row there, but the, the top row is the actual return that the TCRS assets experienced in each of those years. The second row is the assumption that we were making at the time, and you can see back in 2014, we were assuming 7.5% per year for several years. After the 2016 experience study, we changed that assumption to 7.25%. So, we assumed 7.25% for the next four years, and then after the 2020 experience study, we began assuming 6.75%. So, we've continuously been lowering the expected rate of return. As you can see, there were a couple of years where we got pretty close, but there were also some years where there was some significant volatility, in particular, 2021 and 2022. So, the, the bar on this chart represents the excess of what we assumed or the piece that was underneath what we assumed. So, for example, look at the 2021 column. We were assuming 7.25%, but in fact, there was a 25.6% return, a really great year for TCRS investments. So, there was an 18.35% change over what we were expecting. So, that's the piece that we set aside, and we spread that over 10 years. The interesting thing is, is the significance of that 26% return compared to all the previous years, there was some volatility in previous years, but that was somewhat off the charts. In fact, we had to expand the width of this chart in order to put it on, to fit on our chart that year. And then the following year, it was only a 3.6% loss on the actual returns, but since we were expecting 6.75%, or let's not say expecting, we were assuming 6.75%. I'm not sure we really ever expect anything particular, but the difference there was 10%. So, we then phased that in over 10 years. So, those two, those two sections started almost offsetting each other right out of the gate, which is exactly what our method is designed to do. Now, the interesting thing, which is maybe a little funny, is to look at the chart now, you might wonder, where's the 2023 bar? Well, 2023, the actual return was 6.7. We were assuming 6.75, so that is on the nose, almost as close as you could get, maybe the closest we've ever actually been to the actual assumption. And there is a number there, a very small number on the chart, but it doesn't show up because it's so small. So, there's very little gain or loss to amortize in 2023. This is through June 30 of '23, by the way. So, we, we track this chart, and we'll keep watching it for the next 10 years, but this will represent gains or losses. Now, the one thing worth noting is, is there's about $759 million worth of gains that we have not yet reflected into the smoothing method, and as those gains are recognized, it would be expected to put a little downward pressure on the rate recommendation because there's some gains sitting out there that we've not yet taken advantage of in our calculations. And then we'll see what happens next year as we then phase in another year's worth of gains or losses. So, you know, none of this is intended to, to suggest that anything is good or bad. It's just the markets are the most volatile piece that we have to, to, to deal with in terms of trying to make approximations and smoothing, and that, this is the approach that we use to do that. So, this chart shows the actuarial value of assets that we're using, how it compares to the market value, and generally speaking, we're going to be pretty close to 100% of market value in terms of what we're using in our calculations. The years where there was the biggest volatility in the market value is when you're going to see the biggest jump. So, for example, in 2021, when there was the big change in asset value, we were only using 87% of the full market value at that time, and if we had used the full market value, contribution rates would have declined substantially. But then the following year, there were actually market value losses, and we went back to using 98% of the market value of assets. So, again, this is the smoothing method doing its job to, to enhance the stability of our recommendations for budgeting purposes. Okay, any questions on data collection, asset usage, anything like that before we keep moving? Okay. I won't spend much time on this page, other than just to say that the process of our funding valuation is, has multiple aspects. We, we want to look at prior service, service that has already been earned. We want to make sure that's properly funded for, and then we also want to look at future service and make sure that each year, we, we come up with a recommendation that covers benefits that are being earned in the system, and that's how we develop a contribution rate recommendation. Any of the prior service liabilities that have already been earned that is not fully funded, we set up an amortization schedule similar to a house payment or a car payment. We just want to identify what that is, make sure that there's a plan in place to fund that over a reasonable period, and then track it every year to monitor it to make sure it's working properly. So, that, that's, in a nutshell, that's how our recommendations are developed. This chart, chart shows the total liabilities and obligations in each group. The teacher group has, has emerged as a little bit larger plan in terms of total participants. The teacher group tends to, the benefit formulas are the same, but the teacher group also tends to have a longer period of service when they actually retire, which means the benefit, when calculated into the formula, ends up being a little bit larger, and then the teacher group tends to live a little longer. So, those, that makes the projected liabilities be a little higher for the teacher group. But there is a material difference in the overall size of the liability for each group. Couple of slides on the funded status. This is a really good indicator of a health of any pension plan is the funded status. A lot of state governments are struggling with pension plans that are significantly underfunded, at least compared to the TCRS plan. So, that's some, this is something that you should be very proud of in terms of a funded status. So this is something that you should be very proud of in terms of a funded status. And this doesn't just happen by accident. It's a reflection upon years of doing the right thing, providing the funding when it was necessary and appropriate, even when it maybe wasn't easy, and having a consistent approach at doing that. So should be very proud of these numbers. But the overall funded status for the group as a whole is 99%, which is, again, very, very good. If you look at each group individually, both state and teacher groups, all groups improved in funded status from one year to the next, but it's very, very small movement, and that's largely because the market value of return on assets was almost exactly what we were expecting. And so you, if the liabilities are growing at that rate, the assets are growing at that rate, your funded status is going to stay largely the same. So a consistent result with funded status. This page that we were just looking at uses the smooth actuarial value of assets. This page shows the market value of assets, which is slightly better in terms of funded status because remember, we were using 98% of the market value of assets as opposed to 100. And so this would be more representative of what would be shown on a GASB disclosure. But again, very, very good results in terms of GASB disclosure, accounting disclosures. I mentioned any past service liabilities, those that would be funded with amortization schedules, those are the unfunded liabilities that we were just talking about on the previous pages. So to the extent that there's 7% or 8% of the liability that was already, that has already been earned from prior years, and we're setting those up on amortization schedules. We've got tiers that have 10 or 12 different tiers. Each year, there's a gain or loss in our actual evaluation. We set that up on a 20-year amortization schedule. But in the aggregate, if you lump all those amortization schedules together, each of the groups are projected to pay off all of any of their unfunded liabilities. Actually, the teacher group doesn't have an unfunded liability, and the state group has a small amount that is projected to be paid off within the next six years overall on average. So also, a very good metric in terms of, some states have large unfunded liabilities, and they're paying them off over 30-year periods or periods that are significantly longer. And so again, this is a good sign of a well-funded system with conservative approaches. I won't go into each one of these lines, but this is the different tiers of amortization schedules that have been established each year with gains or losses from assets or liabilities. Each year, there's a, there's a small amount that, that is developed and that is identified separately and established as a part of our funding. So I'll just put this here more as documentation, not that we necessarily need to spend any time on it unless there's questions. So this is the end result of our calculations. We go from a recommended contribution rate from 2022 to the recommended actuarially determined contribution rates for 2023. Relative stability from one year to the next in each of the groups. I've got a slide coming up that shows a little bit of variations, the gain and loss, the breakdown of individual reasons why these numbers changed a little bit, but by and large, very stable from one year to the next. Since the legacy plan has a declining number of active employees, it becomes more challenging to represent the recommended rates as a percentage of payroll because the payroll is declining every year as the group becomes smaller and smaller. If you play that out another 20 or 30 years, the payroll could be zero, but we would still have a significant liability of retirees that we're managing for potentially another 30 or 40 years. And at that point, it would make no sense to talk about a recommended contribution rates as a percentage of payroll. So we also want to look at it in terms of the dollar budget that we expect this to translate into in terms of state budget. So these are the dollar budget amounts for the fiscal year that would, again, not be applicable. It first become applicable July 1, 2024. So the main point here is, is these are still fairly stable. A little bit of movement in the percentage of payroll doesn't translate into a significant difference in the dollar amounts of, for budget purposes. Couple of quick thoughts on this. As I said, we make a lot of assumptions about the future. We assume 6.75% return each year in the market value of assets, even though we know each year it's going to be a little bit different. There are other assumptions that we make with regard to salary expectations, cost of living adjustments, mortality. Each of those assumptions have results that are absolutely going to be different than what we assumed. It's almost never exactly what we think it will be, but again, we hope that it averages out over time. So we stop, look at those each year, make sure that, that we can identify what caused any variations and feel good about it if we can explain any changes. So as we go from one year to the next, I'll just highlight a couple of the larger ones. Even though the market value of assets returned almost exactly what we were expecting, we were still phasing in gains and losses from the last 10 years. So there was a little bit of downward pressure on the contribution recommendation simply because we still had that large gain from '21 that we were phasing in a little bit from each year. It was a little bigger than the loss in '22, so that's net helping us. We are assuming roughly, it's based on age, but there's a roughly a 4% salary increase assumption for, for active participants. And the salary experience for the year ending June 30, '23 was a little greater than 4%. Salary growth was a little more than 4%. And so therefore, we stop, assess that, recognize that that was a little more than we were expecting, and it increases the contribution rate a little bit, so we can adjust and move forward from there. Cost of living assumption, also, we were assuming, remember, the last experience study was in 2020, and we set assumptions then when interest rates were near zero and cost of living inflation was very low, if even zero. So we had set then our cost of living, we had set our inflation assumption at 2 and 1/4, and the cost of living adjustment to be 2.1. And with the recent surge in inflation and the higher cost of living adjustments, the 3% cap was applied this year at TC, within TCRS. So we were assuming 2.125. We actually had 3%. So again, that's going to put a little upward pressure on our rates as we make that adjustment and then move forward from here. So then again, these are just small, they're relatively small in the grand scheme of things, but it's nice to be able to stop and quantify them and understand what caused one year's rate to change to another. One other line item I'll point out here, midway down, there's an additional $350 million contribution that applies only in the state column. The state has budgeted additional contributions each of the last couple of years, and in this fiscal year, a $350 million contribution was deposited into the trust fund to help, help fund any previous liabilities. And while that $200 million, $250 million contribution was made the year before, it largely offset experience study assumption changes that were being made at the time, lowering the assumed market investment return rate and mortality assumptions that we were changing. This $350 million helped to offset the experience that was received from salary adjustments, the cost of living adjustments, things that were a little more costly than our evaluation had assumed. Absent that $350 million contribution, the contribution rate would likely have ticked up a little bit. And so there was, you know, it was good timing in terms of having that to offset some of those things from an actuarial evaluation standpoint. Ideally, most of these line items would offset each other each year, and we would have reasonably good stability in the contribution rate, and that's what's happening. History here, you know, a lot of, a lot of variance in terms of tracking the contribution rate over time, in terms of back in the 80s and 90s when market value was high. Every year, it seemed like for over a decade, the contribution rates declined, and then they've, they've ticked up since, and they've really leveled off as we've kind of navigated things since 2007, 2008. So again, the legacy plan, it's a little difficult to look at these on a percentage of payroll because again, we're talking about a declining payroll, even in a lot of these years where the, the percentage appears to be ticking up a little bit, the actual dollar, the actual dollar budget amount has stayed stable, if not declined in some cases. Okay, looking at the future a little bit, I've got a couple of slides here, and then I'll wrap up. So as we talked about the assumptions that we make, the payroll base continues to decline. I've talked about how we need to really focus on the dollar expectation as opposed to necessarily the percentage of payroll. Prior gains and losses, especially those large ones from '21 and '22, we continue to phase those in. And then as we look ahead to the next experience study, we'll look for any changes in mortality. We're anticipating that mortality continues to improve already. So when we're calculating these numbers, we're already building in an expectation that if somebody's life expectancy today is in their late 70s, we're already projecting that five or 10 years from now, the life expectancy will be even greater. So we're already factoring that in. So to the extent that we identify some differences in mortality, we could make some tweaks with the experience study, but I wouldn't expect it to be anything very material because we're already anticipating those. But as we look ahead, discount rate changes, you know, the markets have gone through some major adjustments in the last few years, so we'll just continue to monitor those assumptions, and they could have some, some small impact on our funding recommendations as we head into the next couple of actuarial evaluations. Okay, so I'll wrap up with a couple of slides I like to show you each year, and it kind of puts into perspective maybe the legacy plan, the process of how long it will take for us to continue to manage these plans, even though in 2014, we stopped allowing new employees to enter these plans. So this first slide is for the teacher group, and in 2023, the bottom there, you can see we have 112,000 participants. Those are active participants and those who are retired, receiving payments. And then there are also employees who have previously worked, they're no longer active, but they haven't yet started retiring, haven't yet retired. So there's 112,000 people that we're tracking. And the, the blue line there represents their ages today in 2023. So there are, you know, between 20 and 25,000 people in the age 30 to 40 group, and a similar number of people in each of the age buckets, all the way out to 60s and 70s. And then it declines. And if we look at that 20 years later, the orange line, everything shifts. So everybody's gotten older. Nobody new is coming into the plan. And now, the most typical age category in 2043 would be, there's a little over 20,000 people in that age 60 category or so. So the group of people, they're, they're aging. And then 20 years after that, in 2063, we've still got 30,000 people in the teacher group alone that we're still tracking through the system. Most of these people will then be retirees that we're still monitoring and maintaining the funding status for. And we have to go all the way out to 2103 to really hit a zero. And so this is one of my favorite slides because nobody can hold me accountable to this. In 2103, I can make some pretty significant guarantees behind this. None of us are going to be here to see this, but obviously, the point is not exactly 2103, whether we'll hit one participant or zero. The point is, this is a long time coming, and there's a lot of responsibility here that we're going to need to manage for years to come. And so we cannot just rest on the fact that this plan was closed in 2014 to new employees. It's a significant responsibility that's going to be with us for a long time. So. Similar, similar slide for the state group, very similar outcome. You know, 2083, we're down to under 1,000 people, and 2103, we hit the zero somewhere between those years. So similar, similar concept that the, the state group has a slightly different makeup of different ages at the moment rather than the teachers, but it's a similar outcome. But it's a long time before these plans ultimately reach the, where we can no longer talk about them. And then this, this slide shows the, blue line represents the number of participants that we were just showing on the previous slide. So it goes all the way up to 2103 before it hits zero. The orange line represents the total liability that the plan is being valued, that's being valued under the plan. So you can see in the teacher group, we actually still have another 10, 20 years, or 10, 15 years or so before we actually peak the liability, before we actually see the liability start to go down. Because we still have actives that are accruing benefits, those that were hired before 2014. We still have retirees that are growing their benefits with a cost of living adjustment each year. So eventually, as more active employees retire and everybody becomes a part of the retired group, then the liability will start to decline. But we've still got a little ways to go before we even hit the peak and what the total liabilities are. The state group looks a little bit different. As I said before, the state group is already a little bit more mature. The, the average age in the state group is already a little bit older than the teacher group. And so we've already peaked, or maybe we're sort of leveled off in the state group in terms of what the total liabilities are, and then it'll start to decline also in the next 10 years or so. Again, we'll slowly monitor that and track that all the way to 2103. Okay, well, before, before I wrap up, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to continue to work with you guys. It's a pleasure. The TCRS staff and treasury staff are some of the finest people you'll ever meet, and it's an honor to serve the state of Tennessee. I don't take that lightly, so thank you. If there's any questions that anybody has, I'd be happy to answer them.
Aren't any questions for Mr. Thacker, our actuary, about the actuarial valuation presentation for the legacy pension plans that he just gave? All right. In light of that, then, Chair will ask if there's a motion to approve the actuarial valuation presentation for the legacy pension plan, including the data presented therein. All right, we have a motion. And second, too, for vote for that motion. Thank you. All right, any discussion on the motion? Aren't seeing none. Mr. Wayne, would you call the role of the motion to adopt?
Mr. Archer. Mr. Barker. Mr. Cox. Mr. Ellis. Treasurer Lillard.
Aye.
Ms. Maxwell. Ms. Moore. Mr. Stanfield.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wormsley.
Aye.
I vote Iswells, United States.
All right, the item is adopted. Chair wants to further illustrate what Mr. Thacker said and say back to him that we appreciate his great service over many years for the retirement system and the service of his firm, and it's a great pleasure to have you work with us on a continuing basis. All right, next item is item number eight, which is investment report. We'll call on our intrepid Chief Investment Officer, Michael Breakbill, CFA, and the Deputy Chief Investment Officer, Thomas Kim, CFA, for that report.
Thank you, Treasurer, and I'll have Thomas make an introduction here.
Good morning, everyone. We had a lot of changes this year, and we'd like to introduce one new person and recognize two promotions. Jonah McCoskey, who's back there. He recently graduated from University of Tennessee, and he's joining us as an investment analyst at Real Estate Group, and he's replacing Stephen Wright, who left our organization just recently. And also, we have two promotions. One is Kevin Gentry, who is currently in a transition period, being a investment director, operations director to Deputy Chief Operating Officer at the Tennessee Treasury. And we have Mary Collins here, who is getting promotion to become a Director of Investment Operations. And she also holds CPA, and she also graduated from University of Tennessee. So, all right, well.
So welcome, Jonah, and congratulations on the others for their promotions. I see the University of Tennessee Intersection Investments Division is increasing in size and number. Here's them.
Excited to have Mary. We've worked with, Tom and I have worked with Mary on a number of projects for a long time. She's done a great work for us, so we're really excited. We are sad. Kevin Gentry's done a great job for us, who are sad to have him leave. So it's, it's, it's a bittersweet thing, no doubt about it. Good to see you all. One thing I wanted to mention, we don't have an investment report, a finalized investment report. There we go. A draft performance report, and, and I'll discuss that here in a second. Then we'll go through what we typically do as far as the market outlook, inflation, growth, economic growth, valuations, and monetary policy, and then get back to what the portfolio looks like right now. So the reason we don't have a finalized report is we pulled in, this December the 1st is early in the, in the third, third month of the, of the quarter, and it's kind of difficult for us to pull that, that report in. This is a draft report. We actually got another draft as of late last night. I haven't updated that. I highlighted at the very bottom, an area, strategic lending. That's one of our portfolios where we really scramble. We have a bunch of private-type assets in there that it takes a long to get, long time to get performance report. That's typically our holdup on these reports. And so that particular part of the portfolio is kind of what's holding us up, but that standard, that's a total, it's, it's, there's nothing new about that. That's exactly what we do going forward. One thing I was going to mention as well is that Kevin Gentry, who's, who's leaving us. us and Mary Collins, who's who's taking over his role, one of their key functions is this performance measurement process across the board, TCRS, OPEB, Tennessee Promise, all these other portfolios. And so so she'll be working very closely with our outside vendors that generate this information, and then also, there's a process we're going to go through called GIPS, a CFA Institute process that puts a gold standard on our performance report. We feel very good about the way our performance reports are generated and monitored, but it's basically putting it putting a gold standard on it to give everybody a great sense of comfort. Trailing year has been about a 9%. That will, I think it's going to come up a little bit based on these new numbers that are flowing through, and and a good time overall, but, you know, this last quarter has been has been rough. A quick note about this this number, when you look at this page, all of the, all of the, everything flows up into the top number, total fund. So all those blue lines below that roll up into the total fund number. Additionally, where it says total equity, all of the equity portfolios flow up into it. U.S. Equity, Canada, developed markets, and emerging markets, those all flow up into there. And also, real estate and private equity, those are, have a quarter lag, so, and frankly, that's why it's easy for us to produce those in a in this report, and we, it doesn't have the drag that that strategic lending does, is because we, the numbers you see are a quarter old, basically. So as an example, the real estate number, the three month as of, in this report, where it says minus 0.15, that's in the quarter ending June 30th. And so it's one of the interesting things about this report is the long-term trend. As Justin mentioned, it's been very close to actuarial returns, and if you'll notice, the 6.38%, roughly 7, 7.38% number, that's really close to our, what we've driven over the past 10 years in the actuarial numbers. If you saw on Justin's report, it was started out at seven and a half, then it went to seven and a quarter for the actuarial assumption, and then to six and three quarters. You know, that really mimics that 7.38% really well. In the past 10 years, private equity had the best returns of 19%. Huge gains for a private equity portfolio. U.S. stocks, that U.S. equity line, up 10.94%. Huge 10-year, that's a great 10-year number for for U.S. stocks. And then real estate, our real estate portfolio was up 10.21%. Again, a great number. If you look on the other side, what wasn't so great, our fixed income portfolio up 1.5% for 10 years, emerging market up 289, and then a little better, international develop up 514, and Canadian stocks up 526. I mentioned this in in the investment committee, and I think it's, they're great trends to be aware of. If you look at those and disentangle why the things did well and why things didn't do so well, two things occurred. One is the dollar rose through that whole time. So the dollar has continually gotten stronger versus baskets of other currencies. There's a index called the DXY Index, the Dollar Index, which is a, measures the dollar against a basket of other currencies, and it rose 32% over 10 years. So 3% gain in the dollar versus global currency over 10-year period of time. That's why U.S. stocks did much better than international stocks. If you own an international stock, your currency is kind of falling over time versus the dollar. The other thing is the fixed income portfolio rising only 1.5%. Well, that's because 10-year rates went from 2.6 to 4.6 over that period of time. So a big move upward in rates. Moving on to kind of inflation, as we walk through this inflationary period through the, basically from the pandemic era, basically, you know, our, the programs to keep the economy float during COVID essentially stimulated this inflationary impulse. And that's what you see on the bottom right in housing, that red line shooting up to the moon, is the inflationary impulse of so many dollars flowing into housing. And we've been washing, walking through this chart and walking it through the chart over a period of time to illustrate how that is behaving. And you can tell it's basically about to zero, whether it's zero or a little positive or a little negative, it doesn't matter as much as the direction is, that we've come off that mountain of inflation, and now we've mitigated that somewhat. So housing, one of the big bellwethers of this excess amount of monetary impulse into this, into our economy, you can tell through there how that's wound out. The interesting thing is, if you look at those those troughs earlier, that was the financial crisis, and that was a housing crisis, which was the mirror image of what we've just gone through. Goods, again, we've walked through this over years, and goods have have basically moderated substantially. They quit kind of bottoming out overall, but they've moderated from their their peaks. You know, the core inflation, crude goods were huge numbers, 30, 40, 50% a few years ago, and now they're back to below zero. So a lot of, a lot of softening in on the good side. I added this chart because I thought it was kind of humorous. Employment, the labor market has been one of the key areas that has been a quandary as we walk through this period, is how strong the labor market had acted for so long. I I put this in here because I chuckled when the, we had a jobs number that came out, a monthly jobs number that was a little weaker than expected, and that's what has sent interest rates down recently. This chart was from the front page of the Wall Street Journal, and as you can tell, it says hiring slowdown, the first warning sign of the cooling economy. Well, I circled first because if you notice, non-fire payrolls have been falling for two years. So they say first, but it's really been declining for two years. So the labor market has been softening. It's taken a long time because of the fire that we put underneath everything, but it has been softening, and whether or not 150 is our next number or not, we'll see, but, you know, really have seen softening overall. This chart I've showed you for a few years now hasn't shown that degree of softening a little bit, but this is weekly in unemployment claims. A softening figure in employment would be if this number was rising, and it had, and it's kind of done that and backed off and done that and backed off. So initial claims haven't indicated that much softening in the labor market. However, there's another indicator that comes out with this called continuing claims, which are basically people who have longer-term claims in unemployment. That figure has gone up, which means people are having a harder time finding jobs and staying employed. So the the employment market is softening, and that has created a downtick in 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 interest rates and everything. The leading economic index, I think, is fascinating to see because we don't, it does not appear that we're in a recession at all right now, which means a huge downtick in economic activity. But the way the LEI has worked historically, and the LEI is the orange line, really looks like it should, we should be in a recession. So the decline from the peaks down to a bottom, you can see through history, the blue bars going up and down are recessions. Almost every single time this has occurred, we've been in a recession where the LEI, the leading economic indicator, has fallen off. You know, there, it could be a measure, one reason it could not be showing the same recessionary impulse at the moment could be because the economic growth was so strong that we're coming off such a high peak that that we still have a ways to go. So, but that's something we watch closely. And one thing I had mentioned before, our previous discussion, was how high equity valuations were. They have come off a bit, not hugely, but they've come off a bit. So stocks are less expensive, if you can say it there. You know, they were extremely expensive at one time, especially in that period on the the peak there, and that was at the end of 2021, which basically meant stocks were really expensive. Your expectation for future returns should be really low. That's mitigated somewhat, but it's still kind of in the high-value range. So that's stocks, so that's S&amp;P 500. On the bond side, yields have risen considerably, and so those valuations look better. Recently, that has ticked down. You can see it a little hooked down over over a period of time. So bond yields aren't as as attractive as they were a few months ago, but they're still pretty attractive relative to history. Monetary policy, one of the things we've dealt with are two separate questions, is how high interest rates are going to be, and how long are they going to stay high elevated? And this chart basically illustrates what market participants think about that question. The orange line at the top is December, the month we're in right now, the end of December 23 Fed Funds Futures, and and you can tell that number plateaued and has stayed flat for several months. The blue line beneath that is December 24th, so a year out Fed Funds Futures. So the question of how high interest rates should go is basically determined in that line, where basically we say, okay, we think we're at the top. You know, as an example, right now, the SPIF, the State Pool Investment Fund, yields about 5.4%. Then you can see the the blue line was creeping up, which means we think interest rates are going to stay higher for longer than we did historically. But recently, that number has started rolling off, which indicates the the labor market softening we have seen means that investors think, gosh, the Fed may need to cut. And in our, in investment committee meeting, we were talking about that. It looks like possibly short rates should be about a percent lower a year from now than they are now, but, you know, all, it remains to be seen. So, but that's that's roughly what investors view on that question at the moment. The way the portfolio looks right now, we had a drop off from the end of the fiscal year in returns as interest rates rose and investors became scared of stocks and bonds, et cetera. Through September and into October, basically almost Halloween was kind of the bottom of all of that, and we've had a dramatic rebound since then, and we're basically back where we started. So we started the year valuation of about $65.2 billion. Right now, we're about $65.2 billion after paying kind of net benefits, but but we're kind of back where we started, which actually feels pretty good. So we feel pretty good about the portfolio. We're not really taking any significant weighting differences. I had been more leaning personally on in the yield side and the, and concerns about softening the economy going forward, and I and I didn't really put that into the portfolio, which would have meant, what did you meant, overweighting bonds significantly, which is a good thing because they didn't do well. So so we're staying close to the, close to the vest, and that's that's one of the reasons why. So that's where we are right now. We'll, we'll send you at the next quarterly board meeting, we'll send this updated performance report for Sep- for September 30th, along with probably the calendar year-end December 31st report. So you'll get a final one of those as well. So with that, any, entertain any questions? Oh, and I was going to say, I do like Justin's presentations. I plan on being here in 2103, so I'll be, you know, 140 years old then, so I'm going to try to break the odds there, but thank you all. Thanks, Treasurer.
All right. Super CIO here. Okay, any questions of Mr. Breakbill about his investment report? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is item nine, opportunity for public comments. Is there any public comment for the TCRS Board today? All right, seeing none, let the record reflect that there is none. Next item is other business, number 10. Is there any other business to come before the Board today? All right, seeing none, I'll just announce that as shown on your agenda, future meetings are tentatively set for March 22, 2024, and June 28, 2024. And I'll also point out that there is no Board Education session immediately following this meeting today because it's during the holiday season. We will resume the Board Education series after our board meetings beginning at the March 2024 meeting, so we'll look forward to that event at that time. And I want to thank each of you for your service to the TCRS and those listening as well, and support for the pension plan, as Justin Thacker pointed out, and Michael has pointed out, we're one of the very best-funded and best-managed pension plans in the nation, and that's due to the efforts of all of us collectively. It's no one person or group's effort, so it's really a collective endeavor that I'm very proud of, and I know each of you are as well, and it's in great service to all Tennesseans. So Tennessean, as Justin Thacker pointed out, we pay approximately $3.2 billion a year in benefits out of this plan, so it's a significant economic driver in the state and to our retirees. So thank you for all of that, and I want to be sure and wish each of you a very happy holiday season here as we enter that and look forward to seeing you in the new year. Chair would move that we adjourn at this point. Is there a second?
No, sir.
Are we have a second by Mr. Wormsley? It's non-debatable. Mr. Wayne, would you call the role and the motion to adjourn?
Mr. Archer. Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Ellis.
Aye.
Treasurer Lillard.
Aye.
Ms. Maxwell.
Aye.
Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Stanfield.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wormsley.
Aye.
And I vote ayes, well, it's unanimous.
The Board of Trustees of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.